Appeals meeting to order. We'll start with the roll call.
Aziz Essen.
Norma Drummond.
James Meyer.
Rocco Limetone.
Thank you. Can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Our next two meetings are going to be Tuesday, September 28th, and Tuesday, October 26th. I can't believe we're talking about October already. We do have one set of minutes to approve from July that had no changes until we found out that one name needs to be corrected. So with the correction of the spelling of a name, which Julie will make afterwards, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the July meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstained. I was not present in last meeting.
Okay, good. Thank you. And Julie, again, I'm glad you're here. The minutes were great. Two meetings in a row with no changes on our part, but, you know. So thank you for all the attention you give to those minutes. So tonight, we have no decisions. What we have is a bunch of public hearings, and then we have one application that this board has not seen yet. So we're going to start with the public hearings. Those are applications that this board has already had an opportunity to review, and now we just want to hear from the neighbors if there's anything we should be aware of. And then the review will be, really, it's the first time we're seeing that application, so it will be an opportunity for the board to review what the applicant is asking for, make sure we understand it, and then we'll invite comments from the neighbors at a later date. So there will be no comment, public comment, on the review this evening. So with that said, I'm going to jump right into item number one, which is Appeal 3988, Manuel Bravo, 168 Old Sylvan Lake Road, Hopple Junction, requesting a 19-foot left sideline variance and a 12-foot right sideline variance for an existing dwelling, a 20-foot sideline variance for an existing deck, a variance for a proposed pool, and a proposed 10-foot-by-10-foot shed to be located in the front yard pursuant to sections 194-98, 194-107, and 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reconvene this adjourned public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so...
Good evening, everyone.
Last month, we learned. We learned a lot.
Learned a lot.
We learned that this property is adjacent, immediately adjacent to a cooperative of summer homes, essentially, that operate between the months of April and October, that the power supply for those homes is on this property, that the asphalt walk that essentially runs around the back of this property is literally at the front doors of the neighboring properties, and that the neighboring properties and the cooperative have made use of a portion of Mr. Bravo's property unbeknownst to him, because he just purchased this not that long ago, and, you know, for barbecues and for other public purposes, so they did not wish to see a six-foot fence there. And so we also learned that there are wetlands, not immediately on this property, but the buffer extends onto this property, but the wetlands are across the street on Sylvan Lake, the lake itself there, and that there's a beaver dam in the back of this property. We learned a lot. So I just want to be clear. Mr. Bravo's property is not a portion of this cooperative, right? So his is a year-round residence?
Yes, it's a year-round, yes.
Okay, because last time I left, just thinking, I wonder if, like, I was thinking, is his house also working that six months?
No.
Because he's doing a lot of work for somebody who would only be losing the home for six months. So his, the property line for the cooperative ends at his property.
Correct.
So the dilemma is, because I had done, I mentioned last meeting, I had done a site visit of this one, because, you know, we had heard some comments coming from this one. And so if you go down Old Sylvan Lake Road, the property's going to be on the right, right past Brody, because it is a corner lot, so it does have two front yards, and the house itself is set back in the left upper corner.
Yes.
Okay, so the lot itself is quite exposed, but there is a bit of a berm that affords coming down Brody, affords a little bit of privacy there.
Yeah.
But from the Sylvan, Old Sylvan Lake Road there, it's quite open.
Yeah, well, there's the...
Quite visible.
It is. There's a clump of trees here and then, you know.
Yeah, but it's quite visible.
No, yeah.
For me to say it's visible in the summertime, it's going to be worse in the winter. And so, but coming down Brody, it's much, much more visible.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, so one of the, I mean, obviously, the existing house, the deck, all the rest of it, that's going to make the property, you know, that's, we're not going to have you move a house at this point, so, you know, to change that up, that's not an issue. But the, and the request for the six-foot fence was withdrawn.
Yes.
Again, after discussion with the neighbors. There, we did hear a lot of public comment from the board members of the cooperative who came last month, and I hope you guys were able to have some discussion afterwards.
Yes, we have an agreement with them.
Okay, so I was hoping you could update us on what's happened since our last...
Yes, yeah, and they're here, they're here too, so...
You have an signed agreement? Wow, well, hold on, let's get the comments here first, and then we'll open it up for the public.
So I spoke to the DEC, they came out and marked where the wetland boundary line was, which is more than 125 feet away from our edge of the house. That's existing, existing edge of the house.
Over the buffer, okay.
So it's outside the 100-foot wetlands area.
Okay.
So we didn't have to, she says we don't have to file any wetlands permit or anything like that.
Good, okay.
Also, we made provisions on the agreement, there's provisions for them to go and use the utility pole, the community. Yeah, this, I don't know how to, how do I refer to that?
The neighbors.
The neighbors, I spoke to the neighbors. Okay, that's good, I'm sorry. But anyway, so we have an agreement with the neighbors to, you know, they can use the utility pole whenever they have to, you know, power outages and things like that, and then in, when you guys hit their may? So at the end of April, that's when they turn the power on, the power switch goes there for their community. And then we have an agreement for them to utilize the back, that little back strip.
Right.
And access whatever they got to access with the cleaners.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
We also moved the, they had an objection about the pool equipment.
Right, there was concern about the noise associated with...
So the shed is not used for the pool equipment.
Right, I wouldn't think so.
It's just storage for the house lawn, you know, regular storage stuff. The pool equipment will go opposite the pool, on the opposite side, totally fenced in, high enough to where the sound will not penetrate over into their area. So if we utilize a three-sided fence, that will buffer the sound in the direction of the open part.
Hey, when you say "high enough," how high is this fence?
Well, it's under, you know, the required height, so...
It's only four feet?
Four feet tall, correct.
Yeah, because though it's not going to, in essence, sound, it's not, the walls are not going to absorb the sound, the sound's going to...
No, it's going to go up, yeah, so, yeah, so, you know, it'll be directed away, but it is, you know, 40 feet. You know, the pool is set at 30, and then there's, then there's the five-foot area, then the 20-foot for the pool, then the five-foot area, and then it's over there on that side. So it's like 50 feet.
So it's closer to the house, right, or no?
Yeah, so it's closer to the house at that corner.
So...
Opposite, opposite the shed.
The same location that you show on the survey?
It's on the survey, yes.
Thank you. So it's as far away from the neighbors as you can essentially get it. The shed itself is the 15 feet from the property line, so that's within code.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then you're surrounding this with evergreens, right? Or some kind of the landscape?
Some sort of plantings, yes.
Okay.
I'm looking for, where is the pool equipment area?
That's what? Yours doesn't have it.
That's bizarre.
Right here. Oh, maybe you have the old plans.
Is that the old plan, yeah? Look in your packet tonight, there's a new plan. All right, so comments or questions from board members?
I'm going to wait for the cooperative...
I agree, thank you.
I'm going to wait for the comments first.
I don't have any questions at this time.
No, I have no questions.
Okay. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Manuel Bravo, 168 Old Sylvan Lake Road, Hopple, requesting a bunch of variances? Come on up. Could you sign in? Good evening.
Good afternoon, yes.
Could you sign in, please?
Sure.
Thank you. So the pad, the clipboard is at the podium there.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Oh, my name is Rita Prats, and I'm the chairperson of the president.
I'm going to allow you to pull your mask down if you wish, because you are definitely six feet away from anybody else, so...
Not a problem. My name is Rita Prats, and I'm the president of Pleasant View Bungalow Corporation, and I'm very happy that we followed your guidance of getting together with Mr. Bravo and talking about the different points that we were having some conflicting or differences, and we were able to agree in three major points. The president and vice president, both of us were there, and Mr. Bravo, and we explained to him, you know, the history of the place, because like you're saying, it's very strange the shape of that property. But you have to do, because in this origins, there was one property, and it was divided that way based on the regulations and the need of having a specific amount of acres to be able to section that piece of land. For the past 47 years, since this was divided, that land, that property was divided, Pleasant View was using this, as it was mentioned here in the last hearing, we had been using it with no problem, and enjoying each other as neighbors, which is thus the whole case. We want to have a riskful and peaceful place to live together, you know, the Bravos and the Pleasant View shareholders. So you want me to read the three points?
I don't need you to read the agreement. What I'd like to understand is, how is this being, where, is it being filed somewhere? How are you preserving your rights?
Okay.
You have an agreement, but it's an agreement with Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
So is he giving you some kind of use easement? Is it going to get, is this going to be something going to be filed in the county clerk's office? How are you going to preserve your rights?
Well, we agreed on giving each other, of course, the equal sign agreement and bring one here to the town.
Okay, but again, that survives, that's with Mr. Bravo, it wouldn't survive if he sells the property. That's what I'm concerned about. I don't want, I don't want to find your cooperative in the same position with the next owner of the property. So I'm wondering if, while Mr. Bravo is the owner of the property, if you have a right, if he would agree to file something on his property that gives you permanent use of that property?
We will have to discuss that.
You'd have to, yeah. I understand you've got an agreement, and you guys can work this out, I just want you to think about making something permanent, that's all.
Okay.
More permanent than...
Okay.
All right.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, so I...
That's some kind of easement, something that could survive an agreement with the current property owner.
Okay, we'll look into it, and Mr. Bravo will get together and agree again. No, that's the whole point of being in agreement. And I don't know if we have to come back to the town, or we just...
This is, this is an agreement with you guys, it's not, yeah, we're not a party to it, but, you know...
No, this is private, between the cooperative and Mr. Bravo.
I'm sorry?
It's, it's a private agreement between the cooperative and Mr. Bravo, so you don't have to come back to the town for approval on any agreement.
Okay, good enough, good enough.
So comments on the shed, or the pool, or anything like that?
No, we're very happy that the shed, you know, we agreed if the shed was not going to be used for the purpose of the pump, for the pool, we didn't have any problem with the shed being 15 feet away from us, not a problem. We don't want any noisy thing, so we're fine with that.
Okay.
And then the other thing is that there's not going to be any fence of any kind in that strip of land, which is...
On that strip of land, he has to have a four-foot fence if he's going to have a pool.
Yeah, yeah, but that, we don't, we don't...
Because you did, last time around, somebody raised the concern that there are no fences at all on cooperative properties.
Right, but we don't have any problem in the other area of the house, you know, facing Brody and facing Old Sylvan Lake, but that strip of land, we agreed that there was going to be any kind of fence of...
Okay, and now he understands, too, that he actually has use of some of your cooperative land.
Well, that happens always, you know, with the past neighbors, you know, I remember their children growing up there, you know, having a trampoline, I mean, it's part of being neighbors, no?
Right.
In this particular type of property. But yes, so no fence in the strip of land, and then we don't, we are in agreement if they're going to put, build a fence, we don't have any problem with that.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you for taking the time.
My pleasure, and thank you so much. Thank you to Mr. Bravo and to Pat.
Thank you.
And I love it, because this is a good beginning, it's a peaceful way of starting a good neighbor relationship. Thank you, gracias.
Good, thank you. Anybody else? All right, so do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Unless you, at least, based on the comments, we have any additional questions?
There is no fence around the, so I guess my understanding is, there is no fence around the cleanout areas, the only fence is a four-foot fence around the new pool and the new shed. That's it.
The, the, around, I'm sorry. So the only fence will be around the pool and the pool equipment?
Because it's showing a silk fence around the shed.
That's, a silk fence is just going to be for construction.
That's a silk fence, that comes afterwards, that's for construction.
Is your erosion and sediment control, so this is for construction?
That's removable, it's separate. So we don't get any runoff and dirt.
Right, you want to make sure no sediment leaves the property.
So this is, so this is the only fence?
And around the pool equipment. A three-sided fence around the pool equipment.
Okay, yeah, I, I'm just looking at this new stuff.
Yeah, the new plan was delivered here, and so we're just seeing it for the first time, so... And he provided us with a landscape plan, so that's, you know, so I guess the discussion that the board has to have is whether we want a pool in a front yard, much less a front yard that's two-sided. Like I said, it's going to be very visible.
Okay, and again, as you, when you did the site visit, this property was pretty open, I mean...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so when somebody puts a...
You're coming down Brody.
Okay, it's clearly visible.
It's wide open, and if you're coming on Old Sylvan Lake Road, very visible.
And again, pool is not a requirement, it's a luxury or...
Yeah, it's, I mean, but obviously, the cooperative is not objecting to it, so the neighbors are not objecting, you know?
My inclination is, it's very unusual that we do this, but it is so unusual to have a house, a leased property with two frontages, but the house is located in the extreme corner away from the homes.
Right.
I mean, he can't do anything without being in the front yard. There's actually no room around the sides or the back of the house, whatever one you want to pick up to be there. I would find this to be a very unusual circumstances, I'd be inclined to allow the variance for the pool.
One thing I was wondering is, is it a cooperative or is it a shareholder? Because it says Pleasant View something, I don't know, what is Pleasant View?
Pleasant View Bungalow Corporation.
Pleasant View...
Bungalow Corporation, but you told us last month, somebody told us it was a cooperative.
Well, it's a cooperative.
So there's a, there's a lease, and then the shareholders, and shareholders, so...
Shareholders, right.
Are you using the word cooperative and corporation interchangeably or not?
You know how lawyers are, we were advised, I mean, it's, legality is...
I'm surrounded by lawyers.
You know, legality is, legality is our noblesse.
Come on up to the microphone, please.
Please come to the microphone.
Yeah, this, this comment helps, thank you.
So can you explain, what is, what is the legal term?
We...
Yeah, and this is unique, you know, in the town here, so go ahead.
So we are very excited to be unique.
What is in that legal agreement that you have put together? What's the word that they're using?
What I just said to you, the agri...
Pleasant View... Pleasant View Bungalow Corporation.
Yeah, that's right.
The agreement is, between, the agreement stands between Manuel Bravo and Pleasant View Bungalow Corporation.
Okay. Does it explain what the, keep going, does that explain what Pleasant View?
Discussed and agreed on such a date, no? And then the, the president and vice president of the board, and Mr. Bravo, as recommended by East Fish Town, Fishkill Town Board last month, so we meet, so we met.
Okay, all right.
And then we have the three points.
It doesn't, your agreement doesn't explain what type of corporation it is.
Oh, no, 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 not at all, we need like 10 pages.
Well, I'm just, I'm just doing agreements, that's all.
I'm joking.
I would imagine it's similar to buildings in the city that are co-ops, they're owned by corporations, so I would imagine it's a sort of...
Right, actually, I live one in the city.
Okay, well, thank you then.
Thank you to you.
Good, thank you. So again, I think because of the berm that comes down, then the fact that they're going to screen this, you know, as long as the resolution is clear on screening, so there are two resolutions actually in your packets this evening, because we weren't sure, but I do need to close the public hearing, so...
Okay, I think I have all my questions answered, so I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so...
I would like to add a little language, so I'll read the decision if that's okay.
Okay, yeah.
That's fine, just, you have to change where it references the homeowners association to have it say a cooperative. Pleasant View Bungalow Corporation.
Yeah, Pleasant View Bungalow Corporation.
Bottom of the first page.
Very first page, second where it has from the bottom.
Third where it is. Fourth where it is, actually.
Okay, in reference to Appeal 3988, the applicant, Manuel Bravo, requesting a, first a 19-foot left sideline variance and a 12-foot right sideline variance from the schedule of bulk regulations for existing dwellings.
Jim, can you just talk to the microphone, I'm sorry, it's not...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize it wasn't up. So starting over, making sure that it was properly recorded, this is in reference to Appeal number 3988 for applicant Manuel Bravo, name of project, request for, small I, a 19-foot left sideline variance and a 12-foot right sideline variance from the schedule of bulk regulations for an existing dwelling, double I, a 20-foot sideline variance from the requirements of section 194-94 of the town code for replacement deck, triple I, a variance from the requirements of section 194-107 of the town code to allow a 10-foot by 10-foot shed to be located in the front yard, IV, a variance from the requirements of section 194-95 of the town court code for a proposed pool to be located in the front yard, brand the various, it's called brand, located at 168 Old Sylvan Lake Road, Hopple Junction here and after the property. Resolution offered by zoning board member James Meyer, whereas the applicant recently purchased the property and is seeking to perform upgrades, and whereas the property is a corner lot, and the property's layout is new, and the house is located in very close proximity to the various property lines, and has a long, largely unusable tail, and whereas the property and surrounding parcels were part of the summer bungalow community in the past, which is why the house and the property and the surrounding structures on neighboring parcels are located in close proximity to each other, and whereas, after hearing feedback from existing board members of the homeowners cooperative and the public hearing held on July 27, 2021, the applicant rescinded his request for a variance to allow a six-foot fence to be located in the front yard, and whereas the existing deck is in poor condition, and the applicant seeks to replace it with a new deck, whereas the proposed deck is smaller in size than the existing deck, whereas the applicant will also be replacing a retained wall that is in poor shape, whereas the applicant has proposed a pool, and the only place that a pool could be located is in the front yard, given the property is a corner lot, and the house is located in extreme northeast corner, so all usable property would be in the front, and whereas the applicant has provided a landscaping plan which will include a safety fence around the pool and a new six-foot-high evergreen trees around a significant portion of the property to screen the pool from a view of traffic and neighboring properties, whereas this is a type-two action under SEQA, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on July 21, 2021, and August 18, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on July 27, 2021...
That was continued, that was continued tonight.
And, yeah, I was looking to see if it was on the next one, and whereas the public hearing was continued this evening, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property remain residential in nature, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property, the variances requested could be deemed substantial but are mitigated by the landscaping and the applicant has agreed to, the variance would not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Manuel Bravo for, I, a 19-foot left sideline variance and a 12-foot right sideline variance from the schedule of bulk regulations for an existing dwelling, double I, a 20-foot sideline variance from the requirements of section 194-94 of the town code for a deck, triple I, a variance from the requirements of section 194-107 of the town code to allow a 10-by-10 shed to be located in the front yard, IV, a variance from the requirements of section 194-95 of the town code for a proposed pool to be located in the front yard, subject to the applicant providing a landscaping plan to screen the pool, which is a subject to the approval of the town planner. And be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant or...
Sure, second.
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, you're all set. All right, now you're, now you're deal with the building department, okay? Have a good evening, thank you, everyone. All right, item number two, Appeal 4004, Tomas Boho. Tomas Boho, 292 White Pond Road, Stormville, is requesting a variance for a proposed 12-foot by 16-foot shed to be located in the front yard pursuant to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance, the parcel is a corner lot. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so we talked about the fact last month, we had an opportunity to review the application with you, your house was built around 1981, you told us, and what you're looking to do is replace an existing shed with a larger one, that because of where your septic is and this, and an oil tank, that, you know, you need access to it, that it's the location where you're proposing is the best place, that you're proposing a prefab unit to, that's going to essentially match the house and, or be complementary to the house, so it's not going to stand out and be unusual. And that's pretty much it, so comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
Is there anything else you wish to add from what I said? No, that's fine. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Tomas Boho, 292 White Pond Road, Stormville, requesting a variance for a proposed 12-foot by 16-foot shed to be located in the front yard? I should have mentioned, by the way, you do have a corner lot, so you have two front yards, yes, exactly. And your, the other thing I think that you mentioned last time was that your existing shed is on concrete blocks, and this time you're going to use a gravel base. Okay, so, all right, so seeing no comment, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, I mean, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's fine, I motioned, you can second, so, all in favor? Aye.
Close.
This is Appeal number 4004, applicant is Tomas Boho, requesting, a request for a variance from the requirement of section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance to allow a 12-foot by 16-foot shed to be located in the front yard, resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Essen, whereas the property is a corner lot located in the section of White Pond Road and Milltown Road, and whereas the applicant is seeking to install a shed in the same location as a prior shed and outside of the septic field, and whereas the shed will be in the same style as the house, and whereas this is a type-two action under SEQA, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on August 18, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on August 24, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance... of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will still remain residential in nature, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the applicant has a corner lot, the variance requested is not substantial and will be screened to limit its visibility from the street, the variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Tomas Boho for a variance from the requirement of section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance to allow a 12-foot by 16-foot fence to be located in the front yard, be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
So votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries. Now you just deal with the building department.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good evening.
Good night.
Item number three, appeal 4005, Justin Marinucci. Justin Marinucci, Fort Chestnut Street, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a five-foot sideline variance for a proposed generator pursuant to section 194 dash, sorry, 194, attachment three of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
You are in four corners?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And so really you're looking for an emergency generator to be able to use when power goes out. It's not going to be used all the time at all, so, and I think you, did you say one of your neighbors already has a generator? Or that, there's two generators in a row, so one of that might be the other one.
Yeah, yep.
So, one thing, you're going to do landscaping to screen this, or there is landscaping there already?
No, I am going to landscape around it as soon as.
Okay, that's right. You said you were going to use this as an opportunity to do that landscape.
Right, that I've been wanting to do.
All right, so with that, any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
No questions.
That's for me.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Justin Marinucci for Chestnut Street, Hopewell, requesting a five-foot sideline variance for a proposed generator? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And?
So this is appeal number 4005. The applicant is Justin Marinucci. Name of the project is a request for a five-foot sideline variance from the requirements of section 194, attachment three of the zoning ordinance for a proposed generator. Location is Fort Chestnut Street in Hopewell Junction, here referred to as the property. Resolution is being offered by zoning board member Rocco Limaton, whereas the property is located in four corners, which was developed as a cluster subdivision, and whereas the applicant is seeking to install a generator that will only be used during emergencies, and whereas the generator is proposed in close proximity to the electrical connection, and whereas this is a type-two action under SEQA, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on August 18th, 2021, whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing August 24th, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the location of the utilities, the variance requested is not substantial, the variance will not have an adverse effect, effect, or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Justin Marinucci for a five-foot sideline variance from the requirements of section 194, attachment three of the zoning ordinance for a proposed generator on the condition that the generator is screened by planting a decorative fence. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Have a good evening. All right, item number four, appeal 4006. Eric Winogradoff? Did I say it right? Oh, good. I hate saying people's names wrong. All right, 345 Route 216, Stormville is requesting a seven-foot rear line variance for a proposed 18-foot by 18-foot or 320-foot, four-square-foot deck, and a five-foot rear line variance for a proposed 14-foot, 6 inches by 12 feet or 175.2 square foot screened-in porch pursuant to section 194, attachment three of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. So good evening. We had the opportunity to review your application last time around. You're in the midst of putting in an addition, a second story addition. You had a patio that was kind of raised off the ground. We were trying to figure out what that really was, but you have a patio that's raised off the ground that you're now looking to build on top of, essentially.
Yep.
And so this is, you know, where you're proposing to do this, you know, it's really the best place for where, you know, if you've already disturbed the ground, it's the best place to put it. And you did comment, because it's the rear, that the best, that the closest house was behind you, was about 300 feet away.
About 350, yeah.
Yeah, so you're not really impacting the neighbors, but we did say we'd have an opportunity for your neighbors to come in tonight if they so wished. So with that, any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I am good.
No questions.
Okay, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Eric Winogradoff, 345 Route 216, Stormville, requesting a seven-foot rear line variance for a proposed 18-foot by 18-foot or 324-square-foot deck, and a five-foot rear line variance for a proposed 14-feet, 6 inches by 12 feet or 175.2 square feet screened-in porch? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Hi, Jim?
Good question here. I know Eric, so maybe I should have stayed.
I'm good.
Do you have any?
We have enough board membership. We don't have.
Do you, do you have a financial interest in this?
Financial.
Just that, uh.
Are you a next-door neighbor?
He has a lot of beautiful children, they're from church.
You have no conflict. You're disclosing the, the relationship, but that's it.
That's it.
You have no conflict.
If you need me to read, I'll read then. Appeal 4006, in reference to applicant by Eric Winogradoff, requesting the variances from the requirements of section 194, attachment three, and section 194-94 of the zoning ordinance for proposed seven-foot rear line variance for an 18-by-18, 320-square-foot deck and a five-foot rear line variance for a proposed 14-foot, 6-inch by 12 feet, 175.2 square feet screened-in porch located at 345 216, Stormville, here and after the property. Resolution offered by zoning board member James Meyer, whereas the applicant is applying for the variances in conjunction with his application to the building department to construct an addition to his house, whereas the property currently has a raised patio and new construction will be an aesthetic improvement over what currently exists, whereas this is type-two action under SEQA, whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on August 18th, 2021, whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing August 24th, 2021, whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property, the variances requested are not substantial, the variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approve the request by Eric Winogradoff for a variances from the requirements of section 194, attachment three, and section 194-94 of the zoning ordinance for proposed seven-foot rear line variance for an 18-foot by 18-foot, 324-square-foot deck and a five-foot rear line variance for proposed 14-feet, 6-inch by 12-foot, 175.2 square feet screened-in porch. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did the, sorry, I just have a question before we actually vote on this. Did the noticing include, I guess, reference to the code isn't critical?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, because the actual heading for the agenda doesn't reference both citations of the code, it's just the one.
It's fine, as long as they're, as long as both.
Just making sure, Michael, that's why you're here, to keep us honest. So votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. We're all set.
Thank you.
Your motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. If we had only had three members tonight, would you have?
No.
You would not have been conflicted out, so, but disclosure is fine, just, but just to be clear that there's no conflict. Item, item number five, appeal 4007 of Robert Giordano, 17 Nanook Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 19-foot sideline variance and an 83-square-foot area variance for a proposed 30-foot by 30-foot or 900-square-foot detached garage pursuant to section, to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. 60% of the print of the house is 817 square feet, which is why he needs the 83, 83-square-foot difference. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good evening.
Good evening.
So we had an opportunity to, to review your application with you last month. You commented that you had a lot of stuff around the property that you were looking to put inside, because we did say 900 square feet is pretty large.
Lot.
But you did say that it's really not going to be visible, that, um.
My driveway goes down and it's, you know.
Yeah, you said if anything, people would only see the, the top of it. We didn't really talk about, is it going to have a second story?
No.
Okay, so there's no living space, there's no accessory use on this, on the second, on a second story. There's just.
That's it, it just goes up.
Roofline. Okay, got it. We talked about the fact that your backyard has a septic tank and field, so you really don't have a location to put it there, and that this is going to be, the structure itself was going to be like a pole barn, but it was going to, again, be complimentary.
It's a pole barn, yeah, it's going to complement. It's not going to be exactly the same, but it's going to.
Right, complimentary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, we were, but we were going to see a new survey showing the location, so is that?
Yeah, it was just turned a little bit. He drew it.
That's right, because the box, the way you had it, you said the way your wife drew it in or something. You threw your wife under the bus, but the way your wife drew it in.
The architect guy that was here, not the wife. This is televised.
No, 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 I'm teasing. The way, the way that, the way that it was drawn on there.
We were talking about the same thing. It was drawn on weird.
Yeah, that it was definitely, like, we, we were just wondering if you turned it just a little, that it actually.
Yeah, the front of it's going to be right on the side of the driveway, same line.
Okay, so now we have the survey. So comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
So, yeah, now the box meets that driveway. That was what we were.
That's how it's supposed to be.
That and, and the way it would, would more line up with the property line itself.
Yeah.
All right, Rocco or Jim, any questions?
I have no questions, I'm good.
All right, so does anyone here who wishes to speak for the request of Robert Giordano on 17 Nanook Road, Hopewell, requesting a 19-foot sideline variance and an 83-square-foot area variance for a proposed 900-square-foot detached garage? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
All.
Oh, we have a letter. Thank you. Caesar Melendez, 15 Nanook Road. There's no date on it. To whom it may concern, I am writing to verify that I live at 15 Nanook Road and I'm the neighboring property of the Giordano 17 Nanook Road. I have been informed of the proposed structure and do not have any concerns and/or issues with said proposal. If there are any further questions, please feel free to contact me via telephone number listed above. So with that, thank you.
Yeah, that's one neighbor. You should have another one as well, from the other neighbor.
Um, I think we had that one.
Yeah, that was their, that was their prior.
Oh, okay, do you have the other one? We'll read it into the record. Yeah, let me see if I still, if I can get it.
Yeah, I don't know.
Good or bad, you might not want us to read it.
What's that?
It's a good or bad.
Which, which number was that one?
Nah, they're good.
4007.
No, what, who was, who was that?
15.
All right, I have Caesar, hold on. Yeah, it was Caesar, we have the one, that's the one that came in.
Yeah, that's the only one I have. I only have Caesar.
Really? Can you get, uh, there's another one from the other neighbor as well, but apparently not here.
That's fine.
Not objecting?
No, yeah, not objecting.
Okay.
It's essentially the same thing.
All right, well, this one's on the record. So.
I can get another copy, I just didn't bring it today.
So a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Uh, this is appeal number 4007. Applicant is Robert Giordano, requesting a variance from the requirements of section 194, attachment three, and section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance for a 19-foot sideline variance and an 83-square-foot area variance for a proposed 900-square-foot, 30-feet by 30-feet detached garage. Property is located at 17 Nanook Road, Hopewell Junction. The property, resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Asen, whereas the applicant wishes to install a detached garage on his property to house various cars and other motorized equipment, and whereas the applicant has selected a detached garage style to match the house, and whereas the maximum permitted size of the detached garage pursuant to section 194-107C of the zoning ordinance is 817 square foot, and whereas the proposed detached garage would be largely screened by the, by tree cover, and whereas this is a type-two action under SEQA, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on August 18th, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing August 24th, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property and the location of the septic field. The variance requested are not substantial, though the size of the garage is large, but the applicant has explained that he has multiple vehicles and outdoor machines that would be stored in the garage. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Robert Giordano for variances from the requirement of section 194, attachment three, and section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance for a 19-foot sideline variance and an 83 square-foot area variance for, for a proposed 30-by-30, 900-square-foot detached garage. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, now you just deal with the building department.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, item number six, in our last public hearing of the evening, appeal 4009, Tonyanne Zarelli Kas, Cas, Kaskowitz. Got it. Yes. 69 Four Corners Boulevard, Hopewell Junction, requesting a variance to allow a generator to be placed in the front yard pursuant to section 194, attachment three of the zoning ordinance. This corner is a parcel lot. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. So good evening. We had the chance last month to review your application. Again, you're in Four Corners. This was the generator. You already have the fence there.
Yes.
So you have a fenced-in yard, so this generator will be behind the fence, it's not going to be visible from the street. This is where you're proposing, is where the electrical connections are, so it just makes sense to put it that way. Comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
Again, it's for emergency use, so it's, you know.
I'm good.
I have nothing.
Okay, so any, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Tonyanne Zarelli Kaskowitz, 69 Four Corners Boulevard, Hopewell, requesting a variance to allow a generator to be placed in the front yard? Seeing none, do I have a motion to oppose the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
This is appeal number 4009, Tonyanne Zarelli Kaskowitz, request for a variance from the requirements of section 194, attachment three of the zoning ordinance to allow a
to allow a proposed generator to be placed in the front yard. Location is 69 Four Corners Boulevard in Hopewell Junction, here referred to as the property. Resolution offered by zoning board member Rocco Limaton. Whereas the property is a corner lot located in Four Corners, which was developed as a cluster subdivision, and whereas the applicant is seeking to install a generator that will only be used during emergencies, and whereas the generator is proposed in close proximity to the electrical connection, and whereas the property is a corner lot, which limits the potential locations for the generator, and whereas this is a type-two action under CEQA, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on August 18 of 2021, whereas the zoning board of appeals held a meeting, held a public hearing August 24, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the location of the utilities and it being a corner lot. The variance requested is not substantial. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Tonyanne Zarelli Kaskowitz for a variance from the requirements of Section 194, Attachment 3 of the zoning ordinance to allow a proposed generator to be placed in a front yard on the condition that the generator is screened by planting or decorative fencing. Be it further resolved that within five days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. You're all set. Thank you.
Joy.
And last, but not least, now, we're, public hearings are done. This is just a review, so this is the first time we're seeing this application. Did you leave something on the chair over there? No, that was some earlier. Okay. All right, just making sure. Appeal 4008, Antonio Skanga. Hold on, got to flip the page. 18 Lake Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a two-foot height variance for an existing six-foot chain link fence and a twenty-three-foot rear line variance for a proposed twenty-six-foot by forty-foot, one thousand forty-square-foot attached garage pursuant to Section 198-98 and 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. All right, so, first question, how long have you owned this house?
Eleven years.
Did you put up the chain link fence?
No, it was there when I bought it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chain link fences are not decorative fences, so, unless it's coated in black vinyl or something like that, so.
I do have white slats in it around, and I did bring some photos.
Oh, okay, that would be helpful to see what kind of condition it's in.
Yeah, it's shielded a lot by, it's all wooded in, so, most of it.
Okay. And so, this six-foot fence is where?
It's surrounding the property. Can, I do have photos. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I do.
Is it in the front of the house as well, or is it just in the rear?
It's, it's, yeah, it's towards the rear of the house. It's at the back of the house, and then it, it jots out a little bit, but I do have photos of where it is. You have extra copies or just one?
These are most, here's ten photos.
Like a packet or something, or?
Yes, I have ten copies each.
Oh, wow. There you go. Here's just one set. Just three sets we need.
Yeah, just make a three set and then just, you can get a hand.
Okay. So you are in Lake City?
Yes.
On a corner, no less.
Yes. Yep. So, photo one, do you want me to describe the photos, what we're looking at? So photo- You can start with the first one, basically. Yep. Photo number one, there's a one at the bottom right. That's the view of the front of the home. The chain link fence, you can see runs, runs down the side of the property there on the right-hand side, and is, next to that is a wooded area, a large wooded area. The nearest neighbor is about, I'd say about three hundred feet away.
Where am I seeing a chain link fence?
On, on the right-hand side. It's standing up, but it's running, yeah, perpendicular to the front of the house.
All right, so that doesn't run into the front of the house?
No. And, and on the left of that, you can see the white slats in the fence. That's just towards the back.
So that's not a white, that looks like it's a white vinyl fence.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it has white slats. It does look nice. And along the, the left side of the property, which you could see on two, starting on photograph two, that's a large wooded area. That's roughly about fifteen feet deep, and it runs down the whole side of the property there, so the fence is completely shielded by, by all trees and bushes. Two, two and three.
How far back is your house from the road?
Uh, my, my house is roughly about fifty-seven, I think, I think it's, it's on the survey there. I'm not sure. I think it's ninety-seven feet from the road in the front, but I'm not sure about that. It's on that survey there. Let me just-
All right, so now what are we seeing in four, five and six? Four looks like it's just screening from the side, so.
Yep, four is screening from the side, five is walking down the side of the property. Six is Circle Drive, which is, runs perpendicular Lake Drive, and that's looking to the right. Seven is on Circle Drive, looking to the left of my, the side of my property.
Thank God you're not going to be challenged on your photography skills.
Sorry. Not good, right? I'm sorry.
Oh, my gosh, I can't even read the street sign to be sure. You're telling it-
Yeah, it's a little blurry. I got them, I got them at the, the copy store. I thought there would be better co, better.
That's all right, just, you know.
Yeah. Number, number-
They're helpful. They're definitely helpful.
Number eight is like the view of the back of the fence, and that's all wooded in there as well. There's pine trees that grow along, on the neighbor's side.
Your, your property is like an L shape.
Yes, ma'am.
Seven, eight and nine. What's in that inside box there? What's, where's your, the Conklin property, how close is their house? What do they see?
Um, the house behind me is, and number 10 is an aerial view, looking down. Across the street from me is a wooded area. There's no house. Facing the front of my house to the right is about four hundred feet, and that's also shielded by wood, wooded area. And then the closest house to me would be on Circle Drive, if you're facing the house to the left, and that's roughly, I'd say about fifty feet from the sideline, on the other side of the road there.
So you're twenty-three feet from the rear line. Does your neighbor Conklin gonna object to the garage?
Uh, he, they haven't said anything. The, it's the L shape there, so I guess their property is on, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the name of that road there, but they haven't said anything.
Okay, that existing concrete pad is what, a patio?
It was, yeah, it was a patio there.
It was a patio?
Yeah, it was. I don't, it was-
Is it still there?
Yeah, it's still there. It was there when I bought the home.
So your surveyor should have given us the measurements for that, 'cause we need to be sure that that's fifteen feet in from the property line.
Okay.
I'm gonna guess it's not, so you may need a variance for that as well.
Okay.
'Cause it's less than half of that twenty-eight-foot distance that's being measured. Yeah, so it's, you're likely gonna need a variance for that.
Okay.
We're just gonna consider it a patio.
Looks like it was odd shaped.
Yeah, it's odd shaped.
Yeah, it's not square.
Yeah. The L shape.
Maybe it was a pad for a shed or something at one point, but I don't know.
The rear of that property where the, where the set, where the proposed setback variance is, that's about, it's roughly about four hundred feet from the home on that property, on my neighbor's property. The property is more towards fifty-two. So there's a large wooded area between, and the, at the rear of their property, and that's what my property abuts to.
Okay. So, the garage I'm less concerned about. I'm concerned about a chain link fence.
Another question, do we have, do we need on the survey, the distance from the stream to?
Does this property flood? I mean, this is Lake City, so this is-
No, my, my property doesn't flood. It's in a five-hundred-year plane. I actually have an email from the Army Corps of Engineers. They were saying they'd have no objection to the construction, 'cause it's on the existing paved driveway.
Can you make sure that Jackie gets a copy of that, because that is gonna be important?
Yes. Yeah, that, my house never flooded. It was built in ninety-four, so, and it's, I've never, in the eleven years, we had Hurricane Sandy Irene. Never, not a problem. Never once.
Yeah, but those weren't necessarily rain events. I think Floyd and White, I'm going back a while. Wow.
There was, there wasn't-
You would have, you would have hit both of those, so.
There was two, yeah, yeah. I had, never had a problem. There was a, previously, years ago, there was only one culver going under Lake Drive where my house was, that stream. They added an additional one now. There's never, it's really a big difference now.
How old is, so you didn't put up the chain link fence?
No.
So do you have any idea how old it is?
I have no idea. I think it's, I don't know, I have no idea. I, I looked at photos of MLS listings. I believe they were listed in like 2000 or 99, and the fence was there.
What makes this property unique, that it, we can justify a six-foot chain link fence?
It is wooded in and does look like a white vinyl fence. You can't see it from anywhere. Just from the front. Just put my two cents in.
No, it, it helps.
Yes.
It definitely helps.
I am seeing, is that the thing?
Right, that's what I'm wondering too. Well, is, is that, that might be the fence around the pool.
That is, yeah, do we have a black aluminum fence around the pool in the rear?
Okay.
Uh, that's, that was-
That's not what we're talking about. I think it's actually here.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry about the blurry pictures. The original copies are very clear.
They just didn't want us to see that.
No, the original copies are clear.
The, the chain link fence is running behind that, so.
Right.
Goes into the trees.
Yeah, it's in the trees.
That's also behind the house. It's not in the front yard. It's decorative in the sense it has the slats in it. I mean, that's really the issue, right?
You can actually see it, just a little bit of it right there. But that's-
I mean, it's hardly visible.
Right, it's hardly visible, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I, I think-
All of us in the backyard.
We have to word this in such a way that it's not, it wasn't put, put up by the existing property owner. It's, so it's been there. The neighbors have an object. Well, we're gonna hear from the neighbors.
Yeah.
But it's a heavily wooded, in such a way that it's not visible for-
It's heavily wooded, and any condi, we could put a condition on any approval resolution of the board wants stating that as soon as he replaces the fence, it would be, you know, with something that complies with code, even if-
Okay.
We can note that it's been made more decorative by the addition of vinyl slats.
That would help as well. All right, just 'cause we've got to be careful about a chain link fence. Yeah. All right, motion for public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jackie will give you your information for your sign, corner lot. You're gonna need two signs, please?
Yes.
Okay, one on Lake Drive, one on Circle Drive.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
So moved. Second, all in favor?
Aye.